I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Let's attention everyone, my mic's on. Let's start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me. Ready, begin.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to entitle the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Villasenor, here. Mayor Protem Gorola.
Here.
Mayor Brogie.
Here.
Councilmember Austin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendez.
Here.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the agenda's approved. Okay, now we go out down to item number five, our public comments, and I do have, let's see, two public comments.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Presentation.
Thank you very much. We're going to do presentation first. So let me introduce, we have guests this evening from Momentum Work Inc., and it's Danielle Segovia and Peter Copley, Copley or Copley?
Copley.
Copley, okay, so I'll turn it over to you, thank you.
Hi, everyone, we're with Momentum Work Inc., and what we do is we empower people with disabilities through employment support, so we're going to give a presentation on the power of employing people with disabilities and some ways that we can support them through their employment endeavors.
Yeah. Yeah. I think if we're doing this ourselves, too. Well, we want to thank everybody in the city council and thank you to the mayor, city staff for inviting us here, so October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month, which has existed in some form since about 1945, so we're here to just honor that and introduce our organization. We've been in the community since 1968, originally starting as the workshop organized for rehabilitation by the Qantas, and we've taken, that's what work is, and we've taken on a few forms, but Santa Paula, Fillmore, Ventura County is kind of a new area for us, so we're excited to be down in this area and expanding our services to people who can, who can be served.
So hiring people with disabilities creates a more inclusive workplace, allows for multiple perspectives, creates an atmosphere of goodwill, all of this attracts desirable talent pools, improves customer satisfaction, and builds loyalty.
So employees with disabilities tend to stay in positions actually statistically longer than people without disabilities, and according to a previous U.S. Chamber of Commerce studies, workers with disabilities had an 80% lower turnover rate than those without, do you want to read the next?
Ninety-two percent of Americans look more favorably on businesses that hire people with disabilities than those that do not, and 80% said they would prefer to give their business to companies that hire people with disabilities.
Also, businesses that hire individuals with disabilities are eligible for a work, work opportunity tax credit. And just to be clear, we work with people mostly diagnosed with developmental disabilities, and this can include people on the autism spectrum, it can be Down Syndrome, it can be other types of intellectual disabilities, but we work with many disabilities, autism tends to be the, the big one that we have, so Peter has some stats.
Yeah. This graph here, as this graph indicates, this ASD stands for Autism Spectrum Disorder, and this is one population that we serve, it's just one instance of neurodiversity, as we say, that, that has its own unique attributes that one, when embraced, can really help a company. So for example, there, there's been a lot of work in Australia, but also JP Morgan Chase, and the scenarios that are described here at, at the top here, you have 36 months versus six months, basically, an ASD team ramped up in six months, after three to six months working in one area of the bank, autistic workers were doing the work of people who took three years to ramp up. That second set of bars there, in early 2018, a major Australian bank commenced their Autism at Work program, their initial cohort of nine trainees were proficient four months earlier than expected, returning 12 months of value in five months, so that's your 12 versus five there. That third bar, a team in another government department were provided with a significant backlog, backlog of firewall security that logs, the backlog was assessed as likely to take 18 months to clear, however, the new team were able to clear it in four months. Again, the point just being that, that the particular attributes of, of the particular population, Autism Spectrum Disorder lent itself to ramping up more quickly in that context, becoming productive more quickly, and it's just an attribute that the workplace embraces to their benefit. I have one more slide, and this slide, oh, it's gone, okay. What happened to the slide? What?
You can just move on, it's okay.
Okay. Well, according to, where do our candidates come from, nonprofit vocational rehabilitation vendors like Momentum Work get their referrals from California's Department of Rehabilitation?
All of our participants are vetted and ready to work, they either have prior job experience, and we're going to do our best to match their skillset and their interest to the job that they want to pursue. We do have people, like anyone whether having a disability or not, who are barely entering the workforce, and we still try to tailor our services to help them succeed and, and just helping them through the process, talking to employers, discussing reasonable accommodations, and just educating the community so that it's a little easier for them to integrate into the workforce.
So we let our candidates lead the way, we provide interview skill building, as, as Danielle mentioned, resume support, helping with leads and advocating on behalf of the candidates, so we work very hard to find the right fit for people that, that we're supporting, where our career goals, interests, and skillsets meet, and we have a number of different tools that we can use to help segue candidates into direct higher employment and bridge some skills gaps. One of them being?
One of them being the paid internship program, it opens a world of creative, customized employment opportunities, it is available to individuals served by California's regional centers, for example, in this area would be the Tri-County Regional Center, not far from here. It allows for 1,040 hours of labor with no overhead costs, vendors serve as employers of record and take care of the I9s and the W4s, et cetera.
I want to go back to that program, it's very cool because you can, it's basically free work for the employer, but we will pay them, but you're helping someone gain job experience, you can kind of give your employee a trial run before you decide to hire them, but it's a very cool program that we have, and a lot of our participants really enjoy it, and the flexibility of getting to ease into the workforce.
Yeah, we found some pretty creative opportunities with the paid internship program, we've had people work for baseball teams, we've had people work for architecture firms, basically anything that you can think of where either they're, you know, there's a skills gap where somebody's trying to match that, that qualification, and, and this supports them in leading to that, or, you know, if they're trying to really aspire to kind of a lofty career goal, this is a great tool for that, so.
Adult student work experience, very similar to the paid internship, however, it is a shorter amount of hours, this really helps someone try a few different job sites to kind of gauge their skills, what their, how many hours maybe they're able to tolerate within a workspace, and then we can work with individuals as young as 16 years old, and that would be considered student work experience, but again, very similar, we will pay them, but hopefully the employer will give them the space to take on this employment. So if you know any employers who are hiring or could just use some extra help, it is of no cost to them, and just let us know, we will have our contact information at the end.
And then the last one is paid situational assessments, so we have another tool, open to participants served by the Department of Rehabilitation, where people can go and assess whether they're ready to take on a certain job and help build, build skills. Again, this is at no cost to the participating business, and it's a great way to support somebody's career, career goals, so.
Job coaching, so job coaching is one of the services that we provide, and this can actually be considered a reasonable accommodation for someone with a disability. What a job coach is, is an extra person to either go with them to the job, they can meet with them outside the job, basically helping them make, make sure they're learning things correctly, applying corrections, you might have a participant who thinks they're doing great, but maybe they could be fixing something over here, and that's what the job coach is for. Or, again, we work with a lot of people on the spectrum where they might be amazing workers, but maybe the social skills are a little lacking, and that's another place that we can help them communicate professionally to their team, to their higher-ups, help them advocate, and we understand that not all job locations are suitable for an extra person, so we can provide offsite job coaching as well, just another way to tailor it to the employer, to the employee, and help them succeed in their job.
So yeah, basically a form of quality assurance as well for businesses that are willing to take on risks in hiring people from the disability population, again, it's at no cost to the business that participates, and it can make a huge, huge difference. We've had some coaches who've been with the participants, you know, for decades, and have been, you know, the lifeline for them maintaining employment, but then we also have situations where someone will come in, coach the, the worker until they've got the job down, and then kind of ease back and, and when they require less support, so. And that basically concludes, you know, just an overview of our, our services, if anybody, I don't know if we want to open any questions, but it's great to meet everybody and appreciate your time, so.
Thank you so much, and I think we do probably have a couple of questions, I see. Yeah. Councilmember Gorola with us.
I have a question, but first off, thank you for presenting, I noticed you did mention the Tri-Counties Regional Center, is that an example of a partnership you do have, or is that you guys base out of there, or can you clarify that?
We get referrals from Tri-Counties, as well as the Department of Rehabilitation.
Okay, and so basically you, you have the ability to, if somebody were to walk in, let's say Tri-County's Regional Center, they could walk in and get connected with
Yeah, that's correct.
Your program, and then on their way to potentially even working there or somewhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the Tri-County's Regional Center is one of our funding sources in addition to Department of Rehabilitation, usually someone will come in from the DOR, and then they also happen to be served by the Regional Center, but there's also situations in which the Regional Center has a candidate who wants to set up a PIP, but they need a paid internship program, but they need an employer of record, they reach out to us and we can help make that connection, so.
Awesome.
Anyone else?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mayor, thank you for your presentation, it was really great. For the age range, is there a minimum, is there a maximum?
There's no maximum, typically for just standard employment services, it's 18 on up, but we also have the student work experience, which is a DOR program, and that's as young as 16, so.
Okay, great, and, sorry, a follow-up question too, regarding like supportive services for being at that job, on that job site, if someone wanted to and they were kind of, went through the training, do they have transportation that will get them there and bring them back, you know, what, what, what barriers could maybe someone who, who could possibly qualify for this encounter, and then what kind of, how are we kind of helping to, to move those barriers?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a great question, transportation is by far one of the biggest barriers we've seen across the board, so our organization operates throughout the Tri-Counties, we're up in Slow all the way down to Thousand Oaks, and, you know, there's organizations like Easy Lift, but, you know, they don't always have transportation available, and it's something where you have to book, you know, weeks in advance, you know, and get tickets basically to have them transport you to your job regularly, and then the bus system, of course, as we all know, can take, you know, an hour and a half, even across Santa Barbara to get to a job, so that becomes a massive barrier. We do provide transportation during the job search, we don't want somebody to miss out on a job interview because they didn't have a ride, but we do ask that they provide transportation once they've been hired, because it's part of independence, and that's what we're really trying to instill in the population we serve, is maximizing independence, so.
We do also take that into consideration when doing their job search, if someone has absolutely no way to get across town, we're probably going to keep their job search pretty close to where they live, we will try to tailor it to their abilities and the abilities of their support system as well.
Yeah, and also, you know, just on the topic of removing barriers, just raising awareness about job coaching is something that we're constantly trying to do, because, you know, the ADA's been in place since 1990, people are more familiar with kind of the physical provisions, and, but for people that have quote-unquote invisible disabilities, where they're not necessarily present, sometimes we've gotten questions or pushback from businesses where we come in and we say this person needs a job coach with them, and there's questions, and it's, we just want to raise awareness that it's to facilitate their independence and their growth, and they're there to support that person, they're not there to do the work for the person, and, so that's, that's something we're always trying to kind of educate the public on.
Definitely, yeah, and just one comment I just wanted to add about the transportation was, now that you're working more coming down to Ventura County, is to partner with VCTC.
I was just going to suggest that.
I think Carrie has more information about that, there's some great transportation programs, right?
What I'd love to see is have you come and do a presentation at one of our Ventura County Transportation Commission meetings.
Yeah, we would love that.
Yeah, I'll reach out to you and give you that information, and we'll set that up, so that would be great.
Thank you.
And we have so many different types of transportation, buses and baller rides, and, you know, all over the county, which are fantastic, that all interact with, you know, surrounding counties as well, so.
That's great.
Anyone else?
We have a question right here.
All right, thank you so very much.
Oh, I think we have one question, sorry.
This is available to employers outside of California or outside of Ventura County?
Outside of, yeah, outside of Ventura County, definitely, we do have some placements where somebody will get a job that's remote, that's in other areas within California. Occasionally, sometimes they'll get a job in other, other states or something if it is remote, but then, you know, there's labor laws involved, it's not always so easy, but, you know, we can't, that would be more offsite coaching too, if that person did need coaching, but we do have that, that capability to help somebody get a job wherever they want. We've had people who were supporting in Santa Barbara, but they want a job in LA, we can't go down there and support them, but we can help them apply and go through that process, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And perhaps if you have any cards or anything, you might want to leave them, because I would assume there's probably other people in the audience that would have questions for you as well, so, that'd be great.
Yeah, well, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. So now we move on to our public comments, and as I was saying earlier, we do have several, our two, just two public comments, and all the other comments that I have for the evening pertain to item number 9A, so right now I'm going to address the, our two public comments, and these, this is a time in which our community can speak on items that are not on the agenda but are under the purview of council, so I'm going to first call Gary Cushing.
Mayor Brogie and council members, my name is Gary Cushing, I'm here tonight to request that the city council do a resolution at its next meeting to name November as Veterans and Active Military Month. I believe it's fitting for the city to dedicate not just one day, November 11th, Veterans Day, but to honor veterans and active duty military the entire month of November. Hopefully you'll agree with me to honor these men and women that are, have given and are giving today to keep us safe. Thank you, and then Ernie Vegas will give you the highlights of what goes on here on Veterans Day, thank you.
Great, thank you, Gary. Ernie, please.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members and staff, my name's Ernie Vegas, and I'm a trustee with the Fillmore-Piru Veterans Memorial District, I'm also a veteran, and I, and I belong with a couple of other organizations, American Veterans United, and also with the Los Vets of Fillmore and Piru. We also work very closely with our Veterans of Foreign War, VFW, and we have some of the members here, if you could please stand up and be recognized. I affectionately call them our senior delinquents, so, anyways, I just want to make a couple real quick items here, it's important for our community to obviously thank and, and recognize our, our veterans, not only our veterans, but our active duty people that are out there protecting us, and I think that on November 11th, having the Veterans Day is just wonderful, we have a wonderful ceremony, one of the best ceremonies in the county, where we have a parade of our vets, and then we have a luncheon for them, they get to eat for free, and, and then we have a nice ceremony with all the pomp and circumstance, and it's a wonderful opportunity. Well, this year, we're growing, the Los Vets of Fillmore and Piru started off by John Munoz a few years ago with about 13, 14 vets, they wanted to get together so they could socialize and, and share, share some of their common angst, and some of the things that they like to see, veteran services, and, and really have a fellowship. That has now grown over the last couple of years to 75 people, and today, we've had a luncheon, which we have once a month with our vets, and there was over 30 of our, our vets there, so it's just growing, and it's members from Piru, and it's also a lot of our members here from, from Fillmore. On one personal note, I lost my brother today. He was a veteran from Vietnam, veteran, he had been battling pancreatic cancer for over 12 years, and he fought the good fight, I called him my hero, my warrior, and I can't think of a better fitting tribute, is to have us recognize our veterans who have given their all, and, and have us recognize them over, over this, this next month. With me I have some events that are going on, I'd like to share with you very quickly. There we go. In the upcoming events on November 2nd, the vets of Piru and Fillmore are going to have a Veterans Dinner Dance, and it's going to be at the Piru Petroleum Club, and this is where we all bring our spouses and get together, we've had that successful, we've had 70-some people attend, so we're going to start that off on November 2nd. On the 8th, we're going to, the Piru Petroleum Club is going to have their monthly Veterans Luncheon for vets, they get to eat for free, but on the 9th, this is something different, we're going to have a Veterans Day concert in the park, right here, and we're going to celebrate our veterans on that particular Saturday. Then on Sunday, November, on Monday, November 11th, we'll have our Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony, it starts off at 10 o'clock with a parade, and then afterwards, we'll go to the middle school, and then have the luncheon for our vets, and then the, the ceremony. So then on December 10th, we have a Christmas toy drive, where all the vets will bring gifts, toys for the kids, and we'll give them to our, our fire department. So this is something that we've been doing over this last couple of years, and we're growing, and we love to have the city and the community be part of this, and I can't think of a better way to send my brother away by having a national, or at least a, a community monthly tribute to our vets and our active members. So once again, I want to thank you, I hope that you can consider this, and on behalf of our vets, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Ernie, thank you. All right, thank you to all the veterans that are here, appreciate that, and let's move on now to the, item number seven, city council reports, recommendations, and comments. I'll turn it over to council, anyone have?
Mayor, I do, just to follow, follow up on, on Mr. Cushing and for Ernie's recommendation, I know it is at the mayor's discretion, but absolutely support Navy November Veterans Month, just want to say that.
That's a great idea. Yeah. Anyone else? All right, that's it, we'll move on then to our consent calendar, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
A motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Down to item number nine, new business, so we have several speaker request cards on this, but what we're going to do first is we're going to turn it over to staff, and then I will start calling up public speakers, for anyone who wants to speak on item 9A, you need to fill out one of these forms and give them to our city clerk here, so right now though, let's go ahead and turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor, tonight's staff recommends that the city council discuss AB 1955 and provide feedback and direction on the following items, one, direct staff to prepare a resolution in support of AB 1955, direct staff to prepare a resolution in opposition to AB 1955, do not do anything, provide other directions to staff. Tonight, this item is on the agenda per the city council's request after receiving comments from the public regarding AB 1955, which is called the Support Academic Futures in Educators for Today's Youth Act or Safety Act, decided law by Governor Newsom in July of 2024, the law allows educators at public schools discretion in informing parents of a child's gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation, and in doing so, the law bars disclosure of such information from being a requirement, though also would provide information for parents and educational personnel at public schools on acceptance and the creation of safe spaces for LGBTQ plus students, there's no fiscal impact, but does meet goal of community engagement and communication, and that's all on the report. Ms. Tipp, do you want to add anything?
Thank you. Okay, then, let's go ahead and go to our public speakers, and I do have several, so we usually allow three minutes, but because we have so many, we don't want to be here till midnight, so we're going to cut it down to two minutes per speaker, if that's okay, and we'll start by calling up Luann Brock.
Good evening, council. Thank you. I planned on three minutes, so I'll do my best. Complacency Kills. It's part of what has brought this nation to the level of destruction we see on a daily basis. We have allowed elected officials to make decisions without stakeholder involvement. We complain, make phone calls, give speeches, all in the hopes that we can be heard. AB 1955 is tonight's topic, and the broad ramifications of doing nothing, just deferring to the almighty California Legislature, and a governor that passes laws without input from the populace is wrong on so many levels. Did anyone in this room, or whomever may be listening tonight to tonight's meeting, ever imagine that your government would say that truths about your child at school can legally be withheld from you if your minor child so desires? Where does this type of legislation lead? Sorry, parent, but your child does not want to come to school, nor is he interested in performing, but we can't tell you that. Sorry, parent, we will not be allowed to share your child's progresses or deficiencies with you because you do not provide adequately safe space for your child. Will a parent lose the right to view a child's phone if the minor says not to share the information? This is a dangerously slippery slope. After thirty years in public education where I witnessed staff struggling to build bridges with parents in an effort to educate and support not only academic learning but also societal learning, I believe this law places staff in a compromising position and creates an unhealthy precedence. I'm going to share with you a real-life story, and what I ask you to think about is what role does secrecy play? Keep in mind that children already practice at a level of secrecy as they mature, and for parents attempting to raise their children with their own family...
Luann, I'm sorry, that's the end of two minutes. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. It goes by quickly, I know, I'm sorry. Okay, our next speaker, Dawn Maron.
Thank you, council. I know you're going to be hearing from a lot of people, I'm kind, should have just conceded my time to Luann because I have a lot of the same things to say. My question is, where does it end? You know, yes, there are bad parents out there, there's a lot of good parents out there. So let's say bad grades come in, and one parent chooses to beat their child over bad grades, but ninety-nine percent of the parents decide, we're going to talk about it and work on these grades. So now, do all the parents, this is, this is the slope Luann is talking about. Now, we all lose the right to know about our kids' grades because a couple bad parents are going to beat, beat their kids? I'm not condoning beating kids at all, that's not the, what I'm trying to get to. I'm just stating that parents are in charge of their kids, we're the ones that raise them, we pay for them, we feed them, they are part of us. And as a society, at some point, we all have to stand up as parents and protect parents' rights. You know, I'm not, I, I, that's what Child Services is for. If, if you've got a child that's had a, a bad experience at home, and they come to school, they report it to somebody, they're mandated to call Child Services and pull that child out and deal with that. So why are we punishing all the parents for the few bad apple parents? So I'm, I'm thankful you guys put this on the agenda. I'm hoping that as a city, we can stand together for parents' rights, for family rights, for our kids. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next we have John Garnica, followed by Jasmine Duron.
Good evening, council. Excuse me about my throat. So I'd just like to note that, you know, a copy of the law was included in the, in the packet, and if you actually read the law, the law is pretty clear about what it does and does not cover. It actually doesn't take away any parent rights. What it does is, it keeps agencies, government agencies, from mandating whether or not school staff has to out a kid. That's what it does. It doesn't take away, a, a staff member can still choose to disclose that if they want to, but all the law does is, is say, hey, government, you can't mandate the school staff to disclose their gender identity or their sexual proclivities. What, that's basically what the law says. So another point is that the, the Fillmore City staff noted that the city, the city of Fillmore, has no control over the school district. So again, I ask, why are we discussing this at the city council? Why are we, this is a complete waste of time. We have, you know, the, the number one thing that, that citizens of Fillmore want is they want the, the city to focus on public safety. They want them to focus on parks and recreation. They want the city to focus on the streets that have tremendous potholes. Those are the things that matter, and they have control over. So please, city council, I urge you, focus on the things that you have control over, and please move on. This, this is nothing to do with city business. Thank you.
Jasmine Duron, followed by Sean Terrace. And if you're, if I'm calling you as, like you're on the next at bat, go ahead and stand in the back of the, behind the first speaker so we can expedite things a little bit. So Sean Ter- Terrace?
Yeah, I'm right here. Closer.
Oh, okay. You're good. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Jasmine Duron, and I'm the Advocacy and Community Impact Coordinator for Autism Society of Ventura County and representing ASVC's advocacy committee. We're here today to express our deep concern about Agenda Item 9A, discussion on AB 1955. Our committee was taken aback when we came across this topic on council agenda for many reasons, one being that this topic falls outside the jurisdiction of the city council. City councils do not oversee educational policy or state legislation. Additionally, Fillmore City Council is responsible for creating a livable community for all residents of Fillmore. ASVC is worried that bringing this discussion to city platform not only creates confusion and fear, but also fosters unnecessary division within the community. ASVC has always been an advocate for the rights of inclusion and acceptance for all individuals, including the LGBTQ plus community. We stand firmly with our allies, celebrate diversity, and believe in respecting and honoring people's differences where they intersect with autism and where they are separate. LGBTQ plus youth are vulnerable. According to the Trevor Project, forty-five percent of LGBTQ plus youth across the country seriously consider suicide in the past year. Further, the data shows that LGBTQ plus friendly communities see lower rates of suicide attempts within this population. The city of Fillmore is trusting you through their vote of confidence to make decisions that protect our youth. This agenda item alienates families and will undoubtedly make some feel unwelcome, unsupported, and unsafe. We believe the city council's time and resources are best spent addressing issues that are within its mandate, such as community safety and economic growth, issues that can positively impact Fillmore's residents' day-to-day lives. We respectfully request that the council reconsider spending your time on this divisive topic. We are always open to partnering with the city of Fillmore on initiatives that promote the well-being of all Fillmore residents, including individuals with developmental disabilities and the LGBTQ plus community. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by Steve Lutz. You're on deck.
Did you, it didn't go start to zero. It started at seven.
Okay, I have to ask my assistant to my right here to help me with this.
Since you cut it by a minute, seven seconds makes a difference.
There we go, yeah, it counts. Seven seconds counts.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So Mr. Rowlandz and Ms. Israel, you are the author of the City Council Agenda Memo. And what you wrote in here is a lie. Because in fact, what AB 1955 does is the opposite of what you wrote. It mandates that educators are not to out LGBTQ students without their consent. But, don't believe me, and like the other gentleman said, let's read the attachment to the agenda, which is the bill itself that was signed into law. So the fourth paragraph under the Legislative Council's Digest reads, "This bill would prohibit school from enacting or enforcing any policy, rule, or regulation that requires an employee to disclose any information related to a pupil's sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression to any other person without the pupil's consent." And let's go to section two of the bill. Go to paragraph F. Policies that require outing pupils without their consent violate pupils' rights to privacy and self-determination. Paragraph G. Pupils have a constitutional right to privacy when it comes to sensitive information about them, and courts have affirmed that young people have a right to keep personal information private. And paragraph H. Laws and policies that target pupils on the basis of sexual orientation are prohibited under both state and federal laws. What is wrong with you people, considering something that would intentionally hurt our children?
Thank you. Sean Terrace, Steve Lutz, followed by Diane Sutton.
Hi, a lot of, hi, Mayor, City Council. A lot of what I was going to say was just addressed to you, so in my case, I am just going to ask you that you draft a resolution in support of AB 1955. This is about our children, it's not about parental rights, it's about children's privacy and their right to privacy. They have that as outlined in the bill, as affirmed by courts. If you are a parent who fears the contents of this bill, then you are not providing a safe space for your child, and our child, children need a safe, uh, safe space. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Sutton, followed by Maria Robles.
I recommend that the city council strongly discourage AB 1955, which is the camel's nose under the tent. People don't recognize that maybe, in our Fillmore schools. The state of California's overreach into the private lives of families is to remove parents' authority in raising their children. This is another tyrannical overreach. Schools spending six to eight hours a day in a child's life will have the discretion to determine a child's path to gender alteration. How is this even to work? Does a child indicate to transition to a school employee or counselor, and then they help the minor to obtain hormone blockers to start the process? If the parents are taken out of the equation, who pays for this? Assemblyman Scott Weiner, AB 1432, proposes for insurance companies to pay for transitions along with abortions. Who pays for those premiums? No wonder our insurance companies are leaving the state. Where is the minor housed? Are these supporters of this agenda going to take these minors under their wing, like the pro undocumented immigration people that sound sympathetic and almost teary in public, but would be unwilling to take on that responsibility? Is the state going to remove the child minor and make them a ward of the state? Have you supporters of AB 1955 thought this through? These questions are from a practical perspective. How is this to play out? Do you supporters think the state of California really cares about your children when the profound and grim outcome is to maim and castrate our children? Why would anyone support this horrible tyrannical government? Have you noticed that what is happening in Sacramento? Scott Weiner and Evan Low, two gay assemblymen, creating ridiculous, almost humorous bills as Proposition 3, where you can marry anyone or anything, even yourself. Scott Weiner, SB 58, decriminalizing the use of mind-altering drugs...
Diane, your time is up.
Restructing, am I done?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I have two sentences. No? Okay. Good.
Okay, Maria Robles, followed by Carol Leyes, I believe. LA...
Leyes.
Izzy.
Okay, so my name's Maria Robles. I, I don't understand why this issue is so important to you guys, if you guys really have no power about this, since it's not a city issue, it's a board, a Fillmore School Board issue because of part of education. But it's disappointing to see that those who are supposed to be helping our community are the ones that are almost tearing our two, our different communities apart, because this doesn't take away the right of the parent. The student is allowed a right to privacy, the bill says it. It's, I don't get why you guys think it's important to take this off. They should give the children the opportunity to choose when their sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression should be exposed beside themselves. I understand why some parents may want to know what their sex, their children's sexual identification or gender identity is, but there's a reason why these kids or children aren't telling you guys. If they don't feel like you're safe at home, they're not going to open up to you. They should feel safe at their school, which I don't get what's the problem here. But, um, but is it really necessary for these parents to know everything about their child? Yes, they live at home with them, provide them with a safe place. You knew what you were getting yourself into when you became a parent. I don't get it. Opposing AB 1955 will just make the students not trust the school in which they go to. I would like you city council members to think about their child and how they represent themselves. For me, this just looks like something for everybody to look up to you, the city council voting in November. This just seems like a political move. Because if you see that in an article by The Hill, it states fifty-five percent said that they left their house due to mistreatment or fear of mistreatment over the LGBTQ identity. This shows that there could be serious consequences for these teens.
Maria, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Carol Leyes, Lowes, I'm sorry, and Rock, followed by Rhonda Taylor. So do we have one speaker?
Yeah, just me.
And a lot of support.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So tonight, I'm going to be reading off of something that a fellow youth at one step asked me to say, and it starts with, you guys want to change the policy at the schools, but you guys don't understand how it affects the LGBTQ youth in many ways. Like, some kids grow up with supportive parents, and most of the times, some don't, and some parents are really strict and in denial about it, and they take it far, far to a point where they're punished in many ways, such as sending them to camps where they change. But in reality, they're just mentally abusing them or other disciplinary action. The parents do, what the parents do is physically hurting them and traumatizing the kid, and in some cases, they kick them out, and some become homeless. This mainly happens because they don't believe in the LGBTQ plus community, and some kids commit suicide because of those reasons. And another thing is that it's none of the staff's business to tell parents about a private conversation either between kids or a staff and a kid. If the kid has the confidence to tell a staff about how they feel, or how, or they want to share their sexuality slash gender, then they should keep it confidential and keep it to themselves. I'd like to just add that for a city council, I feel some of you guys aren't really doing your job. I've lived here my whole life, and there's, um, I don't know what it's called, on the streets where like, the thing is coming off. My sister has scars. She falls, and nothing has been done. It's been like a whole decade, and you guys continue to just stay there? You guys don't even help. You guys are being involved in school issues, and you guys are supposed to be a city council.
Thank you. Okay, we have Rhonda Taylor, followed by Ronnie Miranda? Ronnie Miranda?
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Taylor. I'm a Fillmore resident. I'd like to speak in opposition to AB 1955, and I'm going to read the Fourteenth Amendment, Due Process Clause protects parental rights by requiring states to provide... Due Process Clause protects parental rights by requiring states to provide certain procedural protections. The Supreme Court has held that the Due Process Clause protects the fundamental right of parents—to make decisions about their child's care, custody, and control. I would like to read a summary of two Supreme Court cases. The first one is Parham versus J.R. 442, U.S. 584. The law's concept of the family rests on a presumption that parents possess what a child lacks in maturity, experience, and capacity for judgment required for making life's difficult decisions. More important, historically, it has been recognized that natural bonds of affection lead parents to act in the best interest of their children. The status notion that governmental power should supersede parental authority in all cases because some parents abuse and neglect children is repugnant to American tradition. Simply because the decision of a parent is not agreeable to a child, or because it involves risk, does not automatically transfer the power to make that decision from the parents to some agency or officer of the state. The second is Troxel versus Granville, 530, U.S. 57. The liberty interest at issue in this case—the interests of parents in the care, custody, and control of their children—is perhaps the oldest of the fundamental liberty interests recognized by this court. In light of this extensive precedent, it cannot now be doubted that the Due Process Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment protects the fundamental right of parents to make decisions concerning the care, custody, and control of their children. The problem here is not that the Washington—The problem here is not that the Washington Superior Court intervened, but that when it did so, it gave no special weight at all to Granville's determination—
Rhonda, your time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, we have Ronnie—or is it Ronnie or Roni?
Ronnie.
Ronnie. Miranda, followed by—oh, Annette Sula. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I would like to echo some of the sentiments I've heard. To protect the kids and their autonomy for their bodies and who they are, as they develop into whole people, without risk of being exposure. I feel that this is a political football that's been pulled out to be played with in a public forum for someone's political campaign. And I want to—I want to pull that out and show it to everyone, and expose them, and out them, and see how it feels, Mr. Austin, that this political football is going to be on your poster for your campaign. I know you're speaking to a certain demographic of people that have a line of thinking, and they want to come out here and scream to the sky about how the state and the government and Newsom and everyone's doing them wrong and taking away the parental rights. That has nothing to do with you. This is so far outside of your lane that it's not productive. What you're doing is you're taking a position at the detriment of our youth, and you should be ashamed.
Okay. Moving on to, let's see, Annette Sula, followed by—Annette Sula, why do I have you down twice? Oh, I see why. I got you. You're going to come back.
Can I go back?
You can come back.
Interrupt real quick. I just want to remind the public that we appreciate you all being here to speak, but you're to speak to the public, to the council as a body. You're not to single out any council member and attack any council member. So, thank you for keeping that in mind.
Okay, so what do I do? I had two different things.
No, let's address nine.
Okay, this one. Okay. All right. So, in our Constitution, in the preamble, it talks about our posterity. And our posterity, the definition of that, is all future generations of people. It's used in the preamble of the Constitution. I'm very concerned about our posterity, because a lot of the things we're talking about and the things that are being addressed are not going to cause us to have a posterity, because, for instance, transgender people cannot reproduce. So, we've got all these young people that are being told that they can be transgendered. I've lost two people on this issue already, because they believed the lies, they went with it, and then they committed suicide, because they found out they could not transgender. You cannot. There is no physical way you can become anything other—you're—one sample of blood says whether you're a male or female. That was—and you are each individual is a gift of God and created in God's image, and you were assigned that at birth. And I don't know—there is no way to do anything but tell the truth. There are so many transgender people that are trying to untrans themselves now, but they've always been mutilated and can't become functioning human—totally functioning human beings anymore. So, we're talking about our children, and we're talking about them going into school, telling somebody they want to transgender, and the teachers saying that they have the right not to tell their parents. This is absolutely against everything that we believe in the Constitution and all the rights that we are given as free people and parents. And I think that, you know, what I've heard tonight has been very mean-spirited, very—it's just, wow, you know? Parents—
Annette, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next speaker is Erin Lawley.
Sorry, I didn't hear the lineup beforehand.
Followed by E. Allison Smith.
Just wait for this to zero out, please. Thank you. I am currently in my 16th year as a public educator. I have taught all four years of high school, and I'm currently in my eighth year as a community college health and kinesiology professor at the community college level. So, I've had the amazing opportunity to educate and impact thousands of young people from all different walks of life. This is my wheelhouse. I have been the teacher, coach, and advisor that queer students have come out to. Many of them were not out to their parents. I have heard their reasons through tears, screams, tremors, and panic attacks. Some needed to be hospitalized. Their health and safety is my priority as an educator, period, not yours. Just last year, I had two students who were out to their friends around campus, but not their families, because they knew how homophobic and/or transphobic their families were. They knew they wouldn't be emotionally, psychologically, or physically safe if they opened up about their queerness and were their authentic selves. AB 1955 will save children's lives. It has nothing to do with taking away rights of parents. It's about protecting and supporting children. Just today, The New York Times, again, published an article about the alarming statistics related to depression, anxiety, bullying, self-esteem, and suicide for transgender and gender non-conforming young people. If a parent is so concerned with their child's sexuality or gender, then they should make sure their home is a safe place for that child. Then they don't have to worry about their child's teachers continuing to do their job. Please do what's right and follow the California law. Fillmore's educators and students deserve the safety that AB 1955 provides them. This is not your jurisdiction. Times seven.
Thank you. And may I please ask that you remove the sign that's targeting Mark Austin, please, just as the city attorney indicated? That's fine. But we're not going to target anybody on council. Thank you. Okay. Let me catch up again. And you're Erin, or are you E. Allison Smith?
I'm E. Allison.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's Elizabeth, but I go by my middle name. You know how parents, they always say, you know, Elizabeth Allison Smith?
That's fine.
I'll tell you to remonstrate you or something. Hi, my name is E. Allison Smith, and I didn't have any prepared anything to say, unfortunately. I just found about—I found out about this agenda item just like literally, you know, probably about an hour or two ago. And the reason I'm coming up here is because I've worked with LGBTQ youth and also in areas of trying to create non-bullying areas in safe schools with modeled after the Safe Schools projects at K through 12, and actually have done those in—for K through 12 kind of curriculum, but also through—at a higher education and college education programs. And this is before there were anything such as gay-straight alliances and what have you. Way back in the day, there was like the thing called Project 10 in LAUSD, and also shout—students honestly opening up together would gather students who were LGBTQ identified, and would—actually have them go out and talk to different people to try to address the safety issues that were in the schools, because kids who were LGBTQ or who were identified, or even people who were suspected of being LGBTQ kids, were the ones who were the ones who were targeted the most for bullying, harassment, and actually predatory behavior, and other students to where their physical safety was like at risk. Many of them were beaten on a regular basis, not only at schools, but also in their homes. And many of the times, the children and the kids basically were thrown out of their homes or actually nearly killed by their family members, who, when they found out about what, you know, who, you know, what they—
And your time is up.
So, we basically would like to just have you not—
Thank you.
—go into this 1955 and accept it. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Stephen O'Clair, is that correct? Followed by—I think that's our last speaker on this agenda item. Bear with me one second. Okay.
Hello, counsel. What is LGBTQ youth to make of this tonight in this city and across this county? What are they to make about y'all stripping the resources that this city once supported? What are they to make of you stripping and voting to strip healthcare resources just a few years ago? What are they to make of you voting against clean jobs just with this and within this year? What are they to make of that? This county where Larry King and Letitia King in South Oxnard was shot and killed, the worst hate crime since Matthew Shepard, right here in our schools in Ventura County. What are we to make of this? Well, you saw it earlier. Students crying, and some of the council members who mocked those students multiple times in previous council meetings, again, mock a speaker. Again, it's being brought up just in time for an election. Why is that? We know nationwide it's a hot-button topic. You go against the marginalized. You couldn't go against gay people, gay men like myself, because now so many people know gay individuals. So, you go after trans students. You use it for political gains in your race when candidates are desperate to hold on to power. In this case, it's possible it's a council member who is so scared of a West Point grad running against him. One that defeated him just 24 years ago to protect our children for the 16 years that West Point grad served on the school board. So, I ask the rest of the council majority, is this for political gain? Because that's what the county thinks. That is what the organization thinks, and most importantly, that's what your youth thinks. Care about their lives. I want to hear all of you say, "We care about trans students in this city," because I haven't heard it in six years. I've only seen results to the contrary. So, please, to the council majority especially, protect our youth. Vote or do no action on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Just a quick question. Annette Sula, you don't have an agenda item on this other speaking. Is it still also?
No, it wasn't on that. It was—
Okay. Different topic, but still—
Yeah. It was more on the one that I already talked about, the posterity. I mean, we have—you know, we as a nation are a zero minus population, and we know that our forefathers in the Constitution talked about the importance of our posterity. We have to do something differently to change. People are—
Can I interrupt real quick?
What? Yes.
Are you changing topics? Is this for another agenda item? I'm not giving you another three minutes.
No, it was supposed to be in public comments. I put it in public comments.
Oh, way back at the beginning.
Yeah. And somehow, they got flipped around. I didn't put it under this agenda. So, I don't—they didn't—
Yeah, but is it still related to this agenda item? It sounds like—
It's a little bit—it can be.
Okay. Then let's just—I'm sorry, Annette. We don't want to give you an extra three minutes on top, because it really is related to the same item.
So, what do I need to do?
So, let's hold off. If you want to speak again, then, you know, that was—
Can't wait to our next meeting.
Huh?
Can't wait to our next meeting.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, that concludes our public comment session for this item. So, now, I'm going to have staff turn it over to—I'm sorry, turn it over to council for questions of staff on this, on the report itself, and then we'll discuss. Any questions from city manager?
Yeah, no questions. I would like to point out, though, that in the staff report, it was very obviously written that it is important to recognize that the city has no control over the school district regarding this issue. So, for anyone who brought that to light or misunderstood that, I'd ask you to go back and reread the packet. It is with great caution that we approach this issue, but also with great understanding that there are lots of opinions out there that have been brought to light to the council many times from very different viewpoints, and that's, in my opinion, why it was brought before us. I also would like to recommend, as was presented by the staff, that we go neither opposing nor affirming AB 1955, but to recognize that we support Fillmore Unified School District in how they deal with the law as it is written. The law, I believe, is supposed to go into effect January 1st, if I'm not mistaken. So, it's well on its way. Whether or not any comments that people made, they wish they could have made before, the time has gone and passed. It doesn't mean that things don't change either. And so, that's what's important to understand, is laws change all the time. But what's most important is for us to realize that January 1st, we expect the law to go into effect, and so I would like to recommend that city staff draft a statement in support of Fillmore Unified School District and its board trustees and their responsibility in dealing with the school issues, as well as bringing up this topic at our next ad hoc meeting, whenever that is, to understand just how we can support parents, families—families especially—who are the basic building block of our society. They provide all the resources financially to our schools, to our city. They are the bedrock of our community. So, where we do have jurisdictional lines, families cross all those lines, and that's why this is an important issue for the city to recognize. It's not cut and dry all the time. The city interacts with the school district on so many different things, and it's very important for us to recognize that even though we have specific responsibilities for legal action, we have a greater responsibility to our community to partner with the school district, who I support unapologetically. I have many different ideas about what the school could do as a parent of five to do things better, but that's my role as a parent. But in my professional capacity, I have never once seen any issue that the school district did not handle gracefully, that they did not address specifically with Fillmore citizens, Fillmore residents in mind. And so, we need to support the school district in doing their job in supporting everyone as they come together to either deal with the ramifications that they see negatively about AB 1955, or the positive ramifications, however they see it. It is not our jurisdiction, but there are other legal challenges already to it. And so, in my opinion, as a father of five, as a city council member, and as a graduate lifelong of Fillmore Unified School District, let's support the school district, and let's discuss it with them on how we can help the school district managing families, managing students— students, as AB 1955 goes into law.
Okay.
I was going to say, for somebody to come up here and say this is a political issue, when this was put on the agenda, was proposed for the agenda way before this political season started. I'd just like to say that. The other, the other issue is that we knew this was a school issue, which is why we decided not to go with an ordinance. We decided to go with a resolution, which is an opinion of council. Council could have taken an opinion. We, we were in our lane, because the city, there were several people who came forward asking us. We ended up receiving over 500 signatures saying, please put it on agenda, at least discuss it. So, we were in our lane. Anything that involves the public is our lane. Like Chris was saying, it's blended so closely together. I do have an opinion on AB 1955. I feel that it essentially erodes parental rights. It acts an incremental step towards separating parents from the child, replacing the parent with the state. It creates division between parents and their children, because it allows teachers to conceal information from the parents, thus destroying the trust and the family unit. So I do believe that AB 55, 1955, is a bad situation. It has, I wasn't even referring anything to do with the LGBT. I'm just talking about parental rights. As a parental right, it destroys parental rights. You guys cannot sit there and deny that. That's what I was after. I have discussed this resolution at least probably six or seven times with the mayor of Huntington Beach, which you all know is the one that pushed for an ordinance for Huntington Beach. I talked to her about our resolution, what we were going to do, what we could do, what we couldn't do. And I knew full well this was not a school board issue. All along, I knew it was not a school, I mean, it was not a council issue. But I decided to bring it up here for discussion. That's it.
I'm going to just want to say, a lot of the same things that Chris said. Councilmember McGarroll, sorry. This, if you're, I want to say, if you're a parent who's involved in your child's life, this law is not going to apply to you. You're doing your job. If you're really, really a parent that really cares about your child, communicates and has open lines of discussion, this law is not going to apply to you, because you're going to know what's going on in their lives. The only parents that are going to have a problem with this are the ones that don't have open lines of communication with them. You guys aren't doing your job, because you're not listening to your child. There's a little thing called scope and rule, which Councilmember McGarroll kind of hinted on. I think we should go with the recommendation that Councilmember McGarroll brought up. And I agree with Councilmember McGarroll. So, that's all I have to say. But as I said, if you're a parent that's involved in your child's life, this law is not going to apply to you. Thank you.
Kristina, if I may? Yes, I'll take a few minutes. I don't know how many meetings I have to be a part of on this council, and have this topic of LGBTQ be a topic that's hurtful for so many in our community. I feel like it's been over and over and over again in the last four years I've been on This discussion will not compel any change in Fillmore. I want everyone in the audience and those who are watching live or via recording to understand that whatever action is taken, before, for, against, no action, the recommendation, it will not change policy, not lead to any concrete actions. However, I do believe there's an adverse impact that will take place and affect LGBTQ youth, and I will come back to that. The truth about AB 1955, please understand that AB 1955 did not pop out of nowhere. And it does not prohibit school-to-parent communication about this topic. AB 1955 is a result of Chino Valley Unified School District and other school districts' policy requiring, again, a blanket policy requiring teachers and school district staff to out LGBTQ youth students against a student's consent. And no matter the potentially dire consequences to that student. And that according to the 14th Amendment of the US and California Constitution, is a violation of equal protection under the law, along with a violation of the civil rights of students. Hence, the California Department of Education lawsuit and the resulting injunction. An injunction is a court order that Chino Valley Unified must stop implementing this policy. And it is now a permanent injunction as of a month ago. Chino Valley Unified cannot do this policy. Because it violates California's equal protection clause and discriminates against transgender and gender nonconforming students, causing them irreparable harm. In seeking the permanent injunction, the California Attorney General asserted that Chino Valley Unified School District Board's motivation in adopting the policy were to create and harbor animosity, discrimination, and prejudice towards transgender and nonconforming students, without any compelling reason to do so, as evidenced by statements made during Chino Valley Unified School District's hearing on this policy. In discussing the policy before the passage, the Chino Valley Board members of the school board made a number of statements describing students that are transgender and gender nonconforming as suffering from a quote-unquote "mental illness," or quote-unquote "perversion," or quote "being a threat to the integrity of the nation and the family." And the board president went so far as to state that transgender and gender nonconforming individuals need quote "nonconforming parental actions so they could quote-unquote "get better." Okay? No school district or community needs this policy like this one that they tried to pull off in Chino Valley and other school districts. I actually believe it is my right as a parent to know what's happening in my child's life, how they're feeling within themselves, how they're feeling about dealing with the world around them. And I know that I can exercise this right every single day. The opportunity presents itself for about seven hours, Monday through Friday. An hour in the morning, six hours in the evening, you double that on the weekends. Okay? We parents do not need a school board policy requiring district staff to tell us anything about our child. I believe, though, that students and families within themselves, they navigate their best way, in the sensitive nature of expressing one's gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. It's not, it's not our place. It's not our place as a municipality, or within a school board, to legislate to mandate school district staff and teachers to be big brother over students' expression of themselves. What we do need to do is we need to talk and have open lines of communication. We can do, we should do. Blanket policies, like the ones that Chino Valley and other school districts tried to do, that AB 1955 thus for prohibits, right? A blanket policy mandating outing. They have dangerous negative consequences, and they affect the vulnerable LGBTQ youth. We all know there are families everywhere, including here in Fillmore, where that communication I just talked about is not happening. Okay? That LGBTQ plus youth face the opposite, being harmed emotionally, psychologically, physically. And it's happening already without a forced disclosure policy. We learned a couple of months ago in a presentation that Fillmore's domestic violence calls per 1,000 people are higher than seven other jurisdictions in the county. And these partners are mostly women, are the ones who actually made the call. Think about what else is happening in these households and the calls that aren't being made. Think about the kids, think about the students. And we all heard from folks earlier talking about this. To me, doing something like this is dumping lighter fluid on dry kindling, lighting a match, and walking away. Why on earth would anybody do this? Until all LGBTQ youth are embraced by their families, we need to work to protect them from facing mental and emotional anguish, isolation, ostracization, and abuse. Okay? Couple of stats from the Trevor Project. Forty percent of LGBTQ youth, young people, seriously considered attempting suicide in the last year, including 46% of transgender and non-binary young people. One in four Latino LGBTQ plus youth have been physically threatened or harmed in the last year. LGBTQ youth have 120% higher risk of experiencing homelessness. And 90% of LGBTQ youth and young people said their well-being was negatively impacted due to recent politics. It is not lost on me, and nor should it be lost on any of my fellow council members, or anyone who's been watching the city council meetings, that at our last meeting two weeks ago, we proclaimed September to be Suicide Awareness Month. And in that resolution, it encouraged every community member to create an environment where everyone feels comfortable reaching out for support. Nobody has to fight alone. AB 1955 does the opposite. I'm sorry, opposing AB 1955 does the opposite. Creates an environment where this population, the most vulnerable one, vulnerable to suicide attempts, feel that they cannot reach out, they could not be supported, they do have to fight alone. Or maybe they don't fight at all, maybe they give up. Forced outing policies after, also have an underlying notion, and we've talked about a little bit, about school districts and employers being secretive with families, they're being subversive. This cannot be farther from the truth. Our local school, any public school district loves and appreciates and encourages the involvement of parents, both in their students' learning and the school environment. Do you want to volunteer? There is PTA, there is booster club, there is man a scholastic book fair, which I did. Be in charge of a fundraiser, volunteer in the classroom. If you have a skill, volunteer at the high school. I know someone who's in charge of the robotics club. Parents are encouraged over and over and over again to be involved in their students' life. So there is no secrecy, there is no subversiveness going on in our school districts. Do not let this be a political wedge issue that does nothing but bring divisiveness, fear, and anguish. It's important to remember that nearly 40 years ago, next year, the Fillmore City Council passed a resolution making Fillmore an English-only city. Forty years later, I would argue that that divisive policy left scars that are still present to this day and still have ramifications. Please, council, do not do this. I will defend LGBTQ youth, whether they're a half mile away or they're halfway across the country. Don't do this. Please, not a, not a policy to get involved with the school district, or to add it to the two-plus-two meeting, and have the school district decide that this is set policy, this is state law. Take no action or support AB 1955. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Wave your hands if you'd like. There you go.
I guess I'd like to clarify what you mean by "don't do this," because I think what I said was pretty clear about getting involved with the school district and ensuring that any interactions that we do have with the school district where there would be overlap is addressed. So that's what I'm talking about. And so I just want to make sure that you understand that everybody, I think, who has spoken tonight understands that the role that, there's not really much the city can do to change anything about AB 1955. It won't be law January 1st, and we're going to, I would like to partner with the school to make sure that those that do have concerns, and there's obviously many, and those that support it unapologetically, that they, there's a way for people to not really fight over it. You know, that's kind of the point, is there's obviously animosity, which was not introduced by this council. We've heard people's concerns, and let's try to find a way to allay those concerns. I think that's the point.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kristina.
Oh, I was just going to say, I don't, I don't think that there, this is about a policy that is state law, and that school, the school district staff, there's, there is no, there's nothing that's going to be, to be done. Life is going to continue to go on as life is going on right now. If folks do want to approach the school district, they can approach the school district. I don't, I don't see a, a need for, for city involvement.
Thank you. Well, I have obviously mixed feelings about this, as a lot of you do, and I know my fellow council members do. The one, one thing I want to point out, and for clarification, well, first of all, we had four write-in public comments on this issue as well. All four were in favor of it. We did receive one who was opposed to it, but when you read the body of the letter, hold on, Jim.
I didn't understand what you meant.
About the letters?
Yes.
Occasionally, when it's a hot-button issue like the one tonight, we will receive emails earlier in the day for someone from constituents, or maybe not even constituents, some of these live outside of the city of Fillmore. And they state their opinion, just like those that come to the microphone do. So we received four of them today, and they were in favor of, of the AB 1955, and, but didn't really specify that they were opposed to a resolution by the council. They were just voicing their opinion about being opposed, or supporting AB 1955. So anyway, I wanted to point that out, that we had four additional ones. But I wanted to clarify, and I think there's some confusion, I was confused when this 1955 first came out, that it does not force teachers to have to divulge to parents what their student had said to them. So they don't have to, you know, out them, which, you know, that was, that's a relief to know, because we don't want that. But where I believe AB 1955 goes too far is where it, there's nothing requiring a stopgap or something that would prevent a teacher or staff members to encourage, refer, let's say, refer a student to a specialist or a counselor, or further down that road, and continue down that road of assisting the child with the intent of assisting the child to, you know, help them determine their sexuality, which does not require any involvement of the parent either. They can still, and I would feel better about AB 1955 if there'd been some kind of stopgaps where, okay, sure, staff does not have to tell parents that this teacher or staff member believes the child is struggling with their sexuality, they don't have to share that. But they, I, as a parent, to me, it's common sense, I'm not going to relinquish my responsibility and my gift, that's how I see it, of caring for my child. I want to be the one to do that. If I feel like my child needs to be moved to see a specialist, or go to a doctor, or what have you, that, that's my call. And that's the problem I have with this. I completely agree 100% that AB 1955 is right in not forcing a teacher to be the person to out the student, and I agree with that. But it goes too far. I would have, not have an issue with 1955 at all if, in fact, they, it prohibited anything beyond that. If teachers don't want to engage with the parents on this, if they feel uncomfortable doing it, if they are concerned about the safety of the child, then I agree 100%. You know, use your best judgment on that to the teachers and staff. But don't start referring a student, a child, who is not your child, for any kind of treatment, any kind of, it's like, you know, the kids get vaccinations at schools. Don't you have to have a signed consent to get in, some kind of immunization at school from the parent? The parent has to sign off on that. I'd be furious if that was happening without my consent. And I think most parents would be. And so, again, this gets back to this not just being, this not being an LGBTQ issue, this is a parental right issue. That's how I see it. And I don't want to see that slippery slope of parental rights being diminished, and even, the whole term, "it takes a village," that irritates me. I've never liked that from the beginning. It doesn't take a village, it takes the mom and dad, the family, the grandparents to raise the child. There's input from the village. Sure. But not, I just don't buy into this, giving so many rights away where teachers can do further, further the process, make recommendations, and make referrals. Where does it stop? So, that's my position on this, and I agree 100% that this came to us, I think, as our mayor pro temp was saying, it came to us, and also Mark Austin was saying, because the community brought it to us. This isn't fun for us, we don't want to, you know, but we had so many people that brought this to us and so many signatures, that we felt like we can't ignore this, we have to discuss it, and so we're discussing it. So that's my opinion. I'm sorry that one of our council members took the brunt of the heat tonight, that was totally unfair. But that's my position. And we, I'm sorry, we can't take questions at this point. Thank you, though. So that, let's finish this up, and what do we want to do?
I wanted to say, I did a lot of talking to people in the community, but I specifically went to people that didn't, I knew didn't have my same viewpoints, that totally thought differently, and I totally respect this individual, she's not here tonight, and I want to thank her for giving me her input, and, and she was my number one person I went to, she knows who I'm, who she is. I respect her decision, I have different ones, but I agree with her on this, as a parent, I'm the one, I want to make sure that I'm making this. I want to know, like you said, I want to know. But I also think that AB 1955 isn't for the parents, like, that are involved, it's for the parents that are not involved. It's for the parents that are not involved. And that's who it's gonna affect them.
Well, but that's if you can, if you can trust all the teachers and all the staff 100% too. I mean, and forgive me.
And that's why, part of what I was gonna end with, is that I think we should work together with the school district in coming up with a better, I don't know, work together and try to build that relationship and that bond, and work with the school district to come up with a better alternative to what we have now.
What would that look like?
I don't know, because we haven't had the conversations with them.
At a minimum, at a minimum, I think it would be about helping people understand that the law exists and what it means, and maybe encourage the, the school district to put out a statement so that, so that they can address as well, because there's definitely a public misunderstanding of jurisdiction, but then also, there's always lines that get crossed where people come to us for school issues and, I'm sure, vice versa, and it's just a good way of, a simple civics kind of understanding of where the jurisdictional lines are, who they can go to with concerns over these issues, and building that partnership. Because, I mean, we already have a strong relationship, but we can always make it better.
Okay. Well, what's before us this evening is, I mean, we can have that conversation with the school district, but what's before us right now is a decision on the staff recommendations as to direct staff to prepare a resolution in support of or a resolution in opposition to, do not do anything, or provide other directives.
Yeah, my recommendation was to write a statement in support of Fillmore Unified School District and to highlight that, that strong relationship and to address this at the next ad hoc meeting with the school. So the, so the school, between the school and the city, we can develop any other potential plan.
Okay. So from my thinking, that's not what one of the recommendations is. In other words, that's not a...
It's other direction to staff. Yeah.
Okay. So not do a resolution?
Yeah. The resolution, I guess you could potentially draft a resolution in support of the school district, but even just a, even just, even just a statement.
Yeah, but we, I don't know.
Well, there's definitely a public perception, just by discussing it, that we're somehow against the schools.
Then they can bring this by two and two.
Yeah. I think there is a public perception that, just by discussing it here, that we're somehow stepping on the school's jurisdiction, and we're not. But we ought to reinforce that we support the school and the school district and just show our support for the school district. I mean, there's, as a, moving forward from this meeting, I think it makes sense to support Fillmore Unified School District, which was not necessarily involved in the drafting of this law, where they're, they're receiving this law just like the rest of the school districts in, say, California, whether or not they had even hinted at any kind of policy that this would ban. So it's, it's gonna be a new school policy, and we ought to support the school in how it implements any changes related to this.
Okay.
Because ultimately, when, if there, if there are issues, it's gonna creep up again. We might as well go out and support the school district, independent of AB-1955.
Okay. Is there any portion of AB-1955 that you oppose?
I will leave that up to any discussions that I have with the school district in my capacity as a parent.
So you can foresee possibly a resolution coming down the pike after talking to the school district?
No. I'm just saying, this law does not go into effect until after I'm, I'm no longer on council.
That's cheating.
No. No, I'm just saying.
That's a good point. Yeah, I forgot that.
Outside of, outside of a lawsuit, which I, I like boring politics. Like, I don't want to bring litigation to or from the city for something that is outside our jurisdiction, okay? And so there are other legal challenges to this that already exist that might address people's concerns. I don't think we would even need to come close to any of those, but I think we need to reinforce our relationship with the school district.
You have a motion?
I'm in a motion that we do number three, do not do anything. I have a motion.
I second that motion. Do nothing.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed.
Nay.
Okay. So what was that? We should do the voice. Let's do, let's do a voice. Can we do a voice?
Councilmember Vía Senor?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Gorola?
No.
Mayor Brogy?
No.
Councilmember Austin?
I'll go with you, no.
He was your motion.
I can vote no.
He did.
She mixed it up a little bit.
Okay. But can we do it that way? It's his motion.
What I'm voting no is because we don't even know what we're doing for a motion.
Teachers cannot send children to specialists.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna...
I recant. I recant. I vote no.
You're voting no on the motion to not do anything?
I'm voting yes. Yes. I'm switching my motion to yes. I'm switching my vote to yes on number three.
Okay. So now you're agreeing with the motion?
Yes.
Okay. We can use this gavel for something else.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry. Continue with the voice.
Yes.
Okay. So that's...
No, not do anything.
Agree, do not do anything?
Three, two.
Okay. Three, two. Do not do anything. Okay. That motion passes. Our, item number three passes. Do not do anything.
And you do nothing.
Are we clear on this?
The board of councilmembers have voted to not do anything.
Three voted to not do anything.
Which three? You can look it up later.
We could, we did a...
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No. Hold on. Go ahead. What was I, I already said. But I didn't make, I didn't make a motion.
Opposition to AB-1955? I'd vote for that. Can we, can we take, can we strike the vote?
Okay.
I make a motion to reconsider.
Second for that?
Second it.
I'll second it?
On reconsidering.
Okay. So all in favor of reconsidering?
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that's three, two. We're back to square one. So do I have a new motion?
Sorry. Can I have a clarif, can I ask a question? So we had a motion that passed, three, two. Once a motion passes, the motion passed.
But someone on the positive side, the successful side of the motion, can make a motion to reconsider.
To reconsider. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. So I am in favor of a resolution in opposition to AB-1955, but I want to be really specific about the criteria and how that's worded. And I specifically want to, to include reference to parental rights and not getting on this slippery slope, however you want to word that, and losing some of the parental rights that I think are lost with AB-1955. And simply, again, this is only an opinion. It's just an opinion. This carries no weight. It's just an opinion, and I think we have council members who are in agreement that they see that AB-1955 has some good intentions, but there's a whole lot of red flags, and that's the point that I think we're trying to make.
And that, that's where I was asking you why, because if it's parental rights, yes, I agree with that 100%.
Right.
Can I make a caveat motion?
We haven't...
I want to move that we go with number four.
I'll second that, and I'm assuming, Albert, you're talking about my original motion.
Okay. Wait, wait a minute.
So my, my motion stood originally as making a statement in support of Fillmore Unified School District and the Board of Trustees, and to bring the item to AB-1955 as implemented or as, as written, as a topic of discussion with the school board at a two-plus-two meeting, specifically where the school and the city work with each other, have contracts with each other, overlap any of those common things that we share, and there are many. I can't even name them all right now.
Okay. There's a motion. Do I have a second on that one?
Chris, second.
Yeah, I was just reiterating what I said. So Albert and I, I think, are in agreement.
Oh, you're...
That was my original motion. I think he was bringing it back up again.
Okay. I'm asking for a motion on what you just said.
Yeah. Albert made a substitute motion for number four, option four, meaning what Chris had said earlier, and so Chris just explained again what that was after he seconded the substitute motion.
Oh, so, so you seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. So a motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Okay. So that motion does not pass, and I will go back to my original motion about opposing a resolution to oppose opposition to AB-1955 with the caveats that I specified earlier.
I second.
All in favor? Oh, I have never seen this happen.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's dead. Opposed?
Yeah. No.
I'll recuse myself.
He what?
I'll recuse myself on that vote.
What was the...
He recused himself on that one. Okay.
Okay. So where do we go now?
It's a duenna. Okay. More discussion then?
No action?
No one has ever the motion?
Can we, let me try one more time.
I guess the reason why I refuse to vote for something I don't agree with, which inevitably is resulting in something happening that I don't agree with, which is us doing nothing, I think that the importance of, words are important, but action, I think, is more important. And so regardless of what we say, which a resolution or a proclamation of any kind would not change the law, would not really affect anything, I propose that we do something and provide our, show our support of the school, which has always been there, the school district, which has always been there, but then especially to discuss any potential ramifications of the law where the city and the school meet and overlap, which I can think of several contracts that we have with the city or with the school. I can think of a couple of events that we put on with the school. And there may be nothing, but at least we should bring it up in discussion with the Board of Trustees through the two-plus-two.
Yeah. And I, but I, I can see that happening anyway. I don't, I don't think that has anything to do with the item before us right now. You know, I think we...
You can do that with the two.
Yeah. The two, the two-plus-two, that's two-plus-two, meaning two councilmembers meeting with two board members, along with our city manager, and we do that, we do that periodically. We call it a two-plus-two meeting. But we do that anyway. We support them in that regard on all sorts of issues. So I don't see how that's gonna accomplish what this agenda item...
I, I agree, Mayor.
You what?
I just say, I agree with all your statement right now.
Okay. Thank you.
I think as a matter of public perception, that there, there could be confusion just from what we've seen tonight, statements that were made, the, the public, without a clear statement from the city, might think that the city has taken a position which doesn't seem to have passed. And I think it's important for us to, to show that we support Fillmore Unified School District, which is apparent, but not necessarily at all. From the two-plus-two meetings I've been involved with, not a single person has, or a single public attendee has, has shown up. So I do think there is a lot of misconceptions about how intertwined the city and the school really are, and I think it just is important to highlight those existing relationships and, again, to support the school district directly and not create confusion.
Point of order? Has the resolution failed twice?
I, I think a point of order can only come from somebody on the council.
Okay.
Thank you. Great. Okay. Are we at a stalemate? Do I have, can I entertain any other motion? Anyone else have any ideas? Okay. I'll try one more time. The resolution in opposition to AB-1955 with the caveat that we focus on the lack of, the diminishing of parental rights, the possibility of, you know, why we oppose, that's the reason we oppose AB-1955 as a council.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So what do we call that, city attorney?
Scale may.
Should we move on?
No action.
My apologies to all of you who spent so many, has it been hours yet here this evening on this? And thank you so much for participating, and we'll see what happens.
Does it fail?
No. There's no action.
No action.
No action.
All right. Where's my agenda?
What's the score?
Yeah, really. I lost my agenda. Oh, there we go. I have a, have requests for just a quick two-minute break. Can we do that real quick?
Sure.
So those of you who are here, go ahead and walk around, but come back and join us and hear the rest of the meeting. We're just gonna take a quick break, two minutes.
Okay.
I'm setting the timer.
from the city might think that the city has taken a position which doesn't seem to have passed. And I think it's important for us to show that we support Fillmore Unified School District, which is apparent, but not necessarily at all. From the two plus two meetings I've been involved with, not a single person has, or a single public attendee has shown up. So I do think there is a lot of misconceptions about how intertwined the city and the school really are. And I think it just is important to highlight those existing relationships and, again, to support the school district directly and not create confusion.
Point of order, has the resolution failed twice?
I think a point of order can only come from somebody on the council. Thank you. Okay, are we at a stillmate? Do I have, can I entertain any other motion? Anyone else have any ideas? Okay, I'll try one more time.
Right.
The resolution in opposition to AB 1955 with the caveat that we focus on the lack of, the diminishing of parental rights, the possibility of, you know, why we oppose, that's the reason we oppose AB 1955 as a council.
Aye, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am not in favor of words with no action.
Okay.
And then word no?
Yeah, then we're at a...
We're at a stillmate.
Yeah. So what do we call that, city attorney?
Stillmate.
Should we move on?
No action.
My apologies to all of you who spent so many, has it been hours yet here this evening on this? And thank you so much for participating. And we'll see what happens.
This is failed?
So...
There's no action.
No action.
No action.
All right.
What's the score?
Yeah, really. I lost my agenda. I have a request for just a quick two-minute break. Can we do that real quick?
Sure.
So those of you who are here, go ahead and walk around, but come back and join us and hear the rest of the meeting. We're just going to take a quick break, two minutes. I'm setting the timer.
And, you know, put it right in place over a sand bed.
Okay.
So this will, uh, then Wyatt Trap after this is installed, utilities are, uh, connected. He, the company will come in and, uh, finish from the concrete, uh, park that we have out there, the, the hardscape that we have out there, up to the building restroom. So it'll be a, a, a flin, a finished, a flush surface, where you can wheel a wheel, wheelchair into the restroom with ease.
And the flooring itself is concrete?
Correct.
Because it's a single unit?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Um, just thank you, Joe, for, for the presentation and for addressing the timeline. I know that was one of the questions that I was gonna have, seeing that it was gonna be done nearing probably the end of summer. But I appreciate, uh, letting us know that, you know, that with the contractor, they, they have their timeline, but anything that can't be moved up is always appreciated. To enjoy over the summer, the new restroom. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, any, anyone else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Hey, um, I'll move that the city council approve and authorize the city manager to sign the contract with Public Restroom Company for the purchase and delivery of the modular restroom, uh, for Dolores Day Park, and approve and authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Wyatt Trap Inc. for the demolition of the existing structure, pad prep, the final tie-in of utilities. Um, yep, that's it.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I think Chris beat you to it. Okay, so a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this agenda item passes. Okay, so moving on to our next agenda item, uh, nine C, consideration of solid waste solution, Inc., contract amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, um, council members, residents of Fillmore. I would like to request city council to consider awarding a three-year contract extension to Solid Waste Solutions. They have been our consultants since March of 2021. Um, during this time, staff believes that they have been instrumental in assisting the city to comply with state regulations pertaining to solid waste. Um, such state mandates are AB 939, AB 341, AB 1826, SB 1383, and AB 827. They all, um, all of the legislations pretty much go back in the importance of solid waste recycling, and also, um, including the food, uh, recycling as well. SWS, or Solid Waste Solutions, has been working closely with the administrative department and providing the city of Fillmore with the following activities. The preparation of the CalRecycle annual, um, report, which is huge. They also sit on the annual, um, audit calls with, uh, myself. They help prepare my office as well with, um, correspondence that we put out to educate the public. With the franchise, uh, coordination agreement with Harrison, and program developments to continue implementing, um, this different programs that we're responsible to put out there for the community. The Korean Agreement with SWS, which was the first amendment, is set to expire at the end of the year, so we're trying to be proactive. Um, however, we believe that it will be just for the city's best interest if we continue to, um, use their services. They currently are operating not only in Ventura County, but also LA County and Santa Barbara County. So they have, um, in Santa Barbara County, they work with City of Carpinteria and Goleada. Uh, Ventura County, they have Ojai, Santa Paula, Camarillo, and currently with Fillmore. And in LA County, they work with Agoura Hills and Malibu, just to give you an idea. We're expanding the scope of work to allow us to also work with them for the upcoming franchise agreement with, um, EJ Harrison. Um, I wanna make a clarification on my staff report. I indicated that the amount would be not to exceed 133,500. However, that is the amount that I'm requesting that you authorize tonight, and that would increase the total amount for the term of the contract to 312,000. Something that I wanna bring to your attention is, we did apply for a state grant through CalRecycle. We were, um, granted two rounds. The last round that we received was for $75,000. And we have allocated budget to offset the contract fees. And I can tell you from, uh, approving and revising the invoices, it looks like we're paying, uh, 50% of their monthly bill gets offset by the grant funding. So that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
I do, Mayor, thank you. Erica, thank you for your presentation. Um, question on, well, I guess the various bills are, is the implementation, it sounds like, ongoing, kind of in perpetuity?
Correct, and, uh, part of the CalRecycle, um, annual report references the year report. We have different sections that we have to go back and notify CalRecycle on what we've been doing. So there's a commercial portion of it, there's also the residential portion of it, there's intakes. And so, um, SWS handles all that coordination on behalf of the city. They usually send all the correspondence on our behalf, we review it. So it's a lot of, uh, coordination. And they're also sitting on the, um, there's a county group also. So, um, the representative from SWS who you met last meeting, um, Kim Nielsen, she si- sits on those meetings and then reports back to the city, which is time-consuming as well.
Absolutely. And then a, a follow-up question on that, too. Do you see these local assistant grants, like the one for 1383, continuing? Or is that sort of just something for a few, few of the beginning startup years of?
Um, in talking with Kim, we believe that there might be another trench, but, you know, it's just something that the state pretty much manages, so. And last time, we didn't have to reapply, which was great. So we applied, I believe it was in 2021, I brought forward a resolution, and we applied, and we were granted a trench, and then this second trench was much more. Because I think the first time, if I recall correctly, was close to 20,000, what we got, and this time it was 75,000.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
If I wanna, I just wanna make sure that it's clear to the public, kind of, what, what we're doing, so there's at least five state laws that, um, have come out in various timeframes to implement changes to the way we handle waste. The contract with, um, Harrison is separate.
Correct.
But managed through Solid Waste Solutions.
Managed through the, um, city, but with the assistance.
Yeah, with the advisement, uh, yeah, because those laws are obviously many, and, um, sometimes complicated. And to address, um, the question that Christina brought up about, um, whether or not those funds are just kinda like kickoff a program, I, I, I think one of the arguments that was presented from Harrison when the, the rate changes happened recently was to sustain some of the changes that were implemented by these laws. So it's kind of, that's where these two things meet. They're two separate contracts, but one kinda advises the other. And hopefully there's some sustainment in the rate increases.
And if you like, I can just give a brief overview of which, um, each, like, state law means, just for the public, I mean, I can get into details if you like that.
It's, it's okay, I think, is, I mean, it's, it's all there. I just wanna make sure it was clear to people that there, it's not just one law, it's at least five here, yep.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, um, I'll recommend that city council award a three-year contract extension to sec-, um, as a second amendment to Solid Waste Solutions to continue to assist the city in the implementation of the solid waste laws and mandates that are set forth by the state.
And a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda item passes. Okay, moving on to item number nine D, we will turn it over to Brian McCarthy.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city of Fillmore. This is a project you've all seen in one capacity or another, different commissions are on city council. Uh, it's the Fillmore on Central, located at 461 Central. And tonight, we're revisiting the Fourth Amendment to the remediation agreement. So in this public hearing, we're considering the Fourth Amendment for a one-year time extension to complete the conditions of approval. The project is located, as, as I said, at 461 Central. It's at the corner of Kensington, Central, and First Street. It's already used, being used as a banquet hall, and you've, you're probably all familiar with it. It probably has a event, one to two per month, and we've received no complaints. It's been in operation for several years now. This is the site plan. This is another image of the site plan, 3D. These are the structures, these are the buildings on site. This is all baked into the conditional use permit that they're operating under. This is the condition that remains outstanding. Uh, it's condition E13, it has to do with the re, the undergrounding of overhead utilities along Kensington and Central. And there's a street light that's at the corner of the alley in Kensington, mainly that's to be replaced with what we have, the decorative Fillmorean light that you see around town. So that's the light that's to go in at that corner. But nothing's ever easy, as you all know. They've been at this for quite a while, and this is the last condition. And this is what the current plan looks like. So when it comes to overhead utilities, you can't always just remove one pole or one light because they are strung together with other poles and lights. And you have to figure out where the, the energy's coming from. Different pole boxes and things like that had to be considered. There were various technical options considered. If you can see my mouse, there's a little triangle there at the corner of Kensington. That's really all that this condition considered. But when you get into the undertaking with Edison's engineering plan and with our engineering, uh, it's evolved. So this is what it looks like today. So there will be, the scope of work has expanded, but in a good way. It's taking down the undergrounding all along Kensington, and then the pole at the corner of Kensington and Central will also be replaced with a Fillmorean light. And it'll be the double globe one that you get on the corners. And then they'll pull that line across the street. Instead of the overheads running across the street, it will come underground. Now, the one part that's, that's not a great aspect is they're add a pole. They have to add a pole on the east side of Central, and that's in order to make the span across the two existing poles there. But it gets us closer to more undergrounding. And hopefully in the future, when there's undergrounding that comes along Central in that block, it will be much easier. So this gets us another step closer. The applicant has been working diligently on it. It's to no fault of their own that it's taken this long. Um, they've done everything that's been asked, they've prepared the civil plans, they've worked with Edison. Uh, so they're getting close. And we should be expecting a final plan from Edison soon, and then we'll go to construction. This is a, a brief timeline in the background here. Uh, I won't get into this too much, but you can just, we just like to usually outline previous decisions so you can follow what's gone on, on the project's history. This has no impact to the city's general fund, and it implements the city council goal for economic development with a diverse portfolio of businesses. There is nothing in this proposal that's a health and safety hazard for the public. It's simply a beautification effort. So being that we're gonna get more beautification out of this, we feel like it's a win. And our recommendation here is to, um, not really consider CEQA too much, but to approve the Fourth Amendment to the remediation agreement, and to extend, uh, the condition of approval completion deadline to October 20, 2025. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Any?
Brian, would you mind bringing up the, the picture again? I was just curious if you could point out a little more clearly where the, the new pole would go? I think I'd see where it would be, but.
Yeah, you can see a green box there on the east side. Right adjacent to that is a red circle, a little bit harder to see. That's the wood pole.
Okay, so it's essentially just replacing one in place, almost?
Well, it's adding a pole there because the span between the two existing lights on that side is too great. But it will take down the overheads that go from light to light. So there's a light there at the corner of Kensington and Central, and from that runs two lights that go overhead to the other lights, and they detach at the top. But those are quite old, and those aren't made anymore. So by taking those down and coming across the street, they've gotta come up a pole, and then they can span across.
You're saying the future undergrounding could happen with street improvements or anything like that?
Yeah, and then future undergrounding, you know, if we could get something on the east side of Central to take down those other segments, you'd be that much closer.
Okay.
Yeah, and the applicant's, you know, on the hook for doing the work, and they're proposing to do the work, they're getting the, the work done, and it's gonna be a, uh, they're proposing a trenchless to get under the street. We're not quite sure how it's gonna work yet, but, uh, we'll be working to minimize any traffic impacts when that's under construction.
And, um, sorry, just another question, too. Just, just to clarify, you said this is not a, it, it, this not, project is not stalling that they are working closely, Edison is working, it's just in terms of Edison's timeline and getting, getting things approved?
Yeah, there, there are turnover in project managers, a lot. Um, and then the technical design has changed. And then we had also at one time contemplated, um, an effort to expand the undergrounding, but we, we couldn't find the monies, um, in our other, you know, their tinks that we were looking at to do that. So we, we were considering all options to get the, the best economies of scale out of work, doing all the work at once. But we came back to this, and this seems to be the best design so far. But it's mostly being generated by Edison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, I mean, our plan ultimately is to get everything underground, all electrical, correct? I mean, ideally, that would be great, but it concerns me with other projects coming down the pike or, you know, running into that delay from Edison. I mean, this was September 22nd when they first communicated this, and then now we're.
When the CUP was first approved was, um, yes, April 22nd.
Yeah, so we're talking three years later.
Correct. I mean, they, they probably didn't start this one condition, um, right away because they were still doing all the construction, and the focus was on the building and safety aspect of it. And then this was more of a beautification thing. So this came in line with when they did the street benches.
Right.
And the street benches are done and completed. Uh, but this one has a, a, a lot longer lead time, uh, for design and for ordering materials.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I move that, uh, city council approves the Fourth Amendment to proper, property remediation agreement with, uh, 461 Central LLC to extend the conditions of approval completion deadline to October 20th, 2025.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this agenda item passes. Okay, so that concludes our agenda. Um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting to closed session. And I believe we have two items on.
We got a couple.
Oh, sorry, I did that again.
Sorry.
I guess never, I never, the third time, yeah, third time.
I think it's because there's no hyperlinks in our packets, so it looks different.
Okay. Turn it over to staff for any.
Commission.
Commission, commission reports, I don't have it in front of me. Commission reports, board reports, committee reports.
Sure, I'll, I'll begin with, with, I just have one. Ventura Regional Sanitation District, little update on Tolan landfill. I believe I let the council know a few months ago that they are starting on the last and final cell of Tolan landfill. Um, there's been some delays that, uh, to no, no fault of current staff, or they're working at Tolan, but apparently 25-odd years ago before, I guess, in the beginnings of, of, uh, the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, there was things left on that particular cell and buried long, long ago. So as they start to dig out this cell, you can manage their, their, they're moving piles of dirt, they're finding trash that shouldn't have been there, and, and other things. So anyhow, in our latest meeting, we had, um, we agreed to a whole bunch of change orders um, to get this project off the ground. Um, and it is gonna go forward. And what it means to the community is, um, just to, for us to keep in that mindset that Tolan landfill will sometime in the next, um, probably 10 to 12 years, it all depends about how, how well, um, the, um, trash can be compacted down and how much airspace they're gonna have. But it will be, it will be filled, and, uh, Tolan landfill will be closed. So just, just a little update on that end, from, uh, Ventura Regional Sanitation District. Oh. I, I'm thinking of the years that, that VRSD took it over, but the landfill has been open since, I wanna say the late 60s or early 70s. But just, it was under operation from, uh, you know, private, I think it was privately, by the, the local ranchers nearby operated it.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, that's it. Then I will not leave our city manager out. Turn it over to him for your report.
Uh, thank you. Just a reminder, tomorrow night, here at City Hall at 6 o'clock, we have the Economic Development Collaboratives doing a social media workshop for local businesses. If you are not able to attend, we also do it in a hybrid format. So allow people to do it online and in person, and we'll also have recorded our city website, website when it's all completed. Uh, we also have the upcoming Fillmore Trunk Retreat Event. That is on Thursday, October 31st. It'll be from, uh, from 5 o'clock to 6 PM. It'll be for a sensory-friendly hour. And then from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock will be the opening for everybody to come down and participate. That's on Central Avenue in downtown Fillmore. If you're interested in participating with a vehicle, we have registration, it's free for the event. The city go online, and all participation forms are due no later than 4 PM Monday on October 21st. And if any questions, please call Parks and Recreation Department. Eight zero five, five two four, one five zero zero, at extension seven one three. And then there's one thing I'll say tonight, because it's on the agenda in terms of talking about the city manager position. Um, I have submitted my resignation to the city of accepting a new position. My last day here will be on November, uh, 29th of 2024. I'll have more comments later on, thank you.
And with that, I'll say the Padres win.
I'd like to think there were no fireworks because of our resolution.
Okay, uh, gonna adjourn to closed session, uh, but we will come back down to adjourn the entire meeting to our next meeting, so, uh.
Before we do, can I just say thank you, thank you to Dave for, uh, what is it, 11 years? 12 with the city? Thank you.
Um, Mayor, I think you have to, um, uh.
Closed session.
The two items, just the titles.
Yeah, I have it, I got interrupted.
I know.
You know, it's baseball news and things like that, yes. So closed session, uh, two items. One with legal counsel and one public employee, employment discussion. Okay, so we'll be back down to close out, thank you.
Okay, we have just read adjourned after closed session and we're going to now adjourn the meeting to our next scheduled meeting on Tuesday, October 22, 2024. Thank you.